I'll call to order the regular council meeting on February 11th, 2025. Our invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Tina Marie Reese of First United Methodist Church. Pastor?
Will you join me in an attitude of prayer? Creator God, we come before you asking for your presence with us today. We seek your wisdom and ask that you guide each of our council members in their thinking, in their listening, in their conversation, and in their decision-making. We are aware, Heavenly Father, that we will not always agree, so we ask for patience with each other and the awareness that there is not always a single right answer, but more often, a means of compromise and collaboration that leads to the best outcome for all of our residents. Grant us perseverance to seek that best outcome in each issue before the council today. We thank you for our council members and our city leaders and ask that you bless them for their service. We pray that you will rise up the next generation of leaders who will serve our community, help our current leaders to encourage them, and mentor them well. Bless our work here today, that Gilbert might be a refuge for its citizens, a place of kindness, peace, and economic opportunity for all who live here. We thank you for the beauty of our city and state and for the natural resources that you have blessed us with. Help us to be responsible in our use of these resources and to be faithful stewards of our talents, our bodies, and our planet. May our meeting today honor you in all ways, and may we be faithful in our service to each other and to you. We pray these things in your holy name, knowing that all honor and glory is yours forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bombay Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Kenny Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Monte Lyons.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We have no presentations or proclamations tonight, so we'll go directly to our public hearings. We have five items, I believe, on public hearings. Knowing that there's separate discussion on items four and five, I'll reserve that. Are there any other concerns about items one, two, or three?
I would just like a quick presentation on two and three.
Okay. Staff?
Good evening, Council and Mayor Anderson. I'm Sal DeSanto, Planner One, here with the town. And the project we'll be taking a look at tonight is annexation case A24-01, East Pecos Road and South 164th Street. So before we get into the subject site itself, I thought it would be helpful just to go over the annexation process and what we've accomplished up to this date and what's to come in the future. First off, the blank petition was filed on January 16th, 2025, with the Clerk's Office, and signatures from vested property owners can start being obtained on February 16th, 2025, which would be the end of the 30-day window for the filing of the blank petition. Once all the necessary signatures have been collected, a follow-up hearing will be held for a final motion in the future. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is to initiate the annexation and also to receive input from the community and council. Just to provide some more context for the subject site itself, here you can see it outlined in blue. I know it is a little bit small on the screen, but I wanted to make sure we got the entirety of the area shown in the vicinity, especially the cross-section of Higley Road and Pecos Road. The parcel is situated at the northwest corner of Pecos Road and 164th Street, which is roughly half a mile west of Higley, as I mentioned. The subject site is bordered by the Town of Gilbert Residential Zoning Districts to the immediate north, south, and west, while Maricopa County zoning borders the eastern property line, which would be RU43. I also wanted to note that the site is currently owned and operated by the Town of Gilbert and was previously purchased by RWCD. And the site is actually part of the wells development program here in town, which is to expand upon water treatment infrastructure and with the hopes that the annexation will assist with the construction, operation, and management of the facility. Here we have the annexation exhibit. As mentioned, the subject site is the area highlighted in yellow, which is roughly 0.19 acres that is zoned RU43 within Maricopa County. Once annexed, the anticipated acreage of the wellsite would be roughly 0.42 acres once we bring in the proposed annexation site along with what's already a part of the Town of Gilbert. The request for annexation would also allow the property to be incorporated into the town limits and would bring the site into the most comparable zoning district, which would be our SF43 zoning district. So just to summarize the requests thus far, the 0.19-acre parcel currently sits within Maricopa County's RU43 zoning district, and through the annexation process, the land would be incorporated into the town, into that comparable zoning district of SF43, ultimately creating that 0.42-acre wellsite. Because wellsites are also permitted uses within the single-family residential zoning district, there is no accompanying rezone or GPA amendment with the application. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
No problem.
And just the last side here is just to gather some information and input from the community as well as the council regarding the proposed annexation. And as such, no motion is being requested tonight. And within one year of filing that blank petition, a second hearing will be held in which a motion will be requested. And with that, I can open the floor to any questions, comments about the proposed annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Any questions?
I just want to, this is, my point in asking this is that this is part of the well program that's going on with water and things such as the money brought forward, Lauren Hendricks helped bring forward from the state, the $27 million grant we got to help with water wells. And I, my point in having you speak about this is what it's, what we are doing as a town, all of us, to keep water in here and what's involved in it. I think there was something in there that showed some of the costs of it and where some of the money went. I thought, was that something we glanced over there?
In which particular side there? Councilmember Torgerson?
I think go back. I thought I saw something. No, I guess I didn't. I thought I saw something that showed the appraised value and paid value, but regardless. I just wanted people to understand that it's an annexation to help bring them water.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Yes, Councilmember Torgerson, you're correct. This is a wellsite that we had previously acquired from RWCD, and the annexation is to bring the portion of the wellsite that was in Maricopa County into the town and then combine it with another little town-owned parcel that wraps around. And yes, it is part of the wells program that we did receive state funding for from last, in last year's budget process.
Thank you.
Yes. I think I forgot to open the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing at this time. No motion is necessary on this item. This is just a public hearing. Thank you. Item three, I'll open the public hearing and invite staff to give a presentation.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Item number three is land acquisition for the Muse Road Improvements, which is located Higley, south of Riggs. These land acquisitions are for three general drainage basins that will take stormwater drainage from the improved Muse Road area. This is negotiated amounts that the property owners have agreed to, to allow the town to acquire this property for, so there is no eminent may needed. And then we just have some details, I believe, Councilmember Torgerson, this might be what you saw, we kind of skipped forward to the next item regarding the appraised value of the land that we are acquiring. And just, so to highlight, this is an ADOT-led project, and it is one of the CMAC, which is the air quality mitigation funds that is being led by ADOT and funded in order to pave the unpaved roads in the town and reduce PM10 dust mitigation.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Councilmember Torgerson?
It shows that it's funded by ADOT, MAG, and CMAC. All of it funded by that?
It's, it's, MAG administers the CMAC funds. So it is CMAC-funded, and because it is CMAC-funded, it's an ADOT-led project, but ADOT's not funding any portion of it. And there's only, there were some matching funds with the town that have already been expended for design, so there's no additional funds from the town needed.
Excellent. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and/or motion. I think we have to do separate motions on each one. Is that correct, Chris? Each resolution?
Mayor, we're looking at items one and three, is that correct? Or are you talking about, oh, item three alone?
Three alone.
You could do it in one, in one motion, just approval of item three as, as written in the agenda.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve item three.
It's been moved by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Vice Mayor Buckley. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Let's go back to item number one. I'll open the public hearing. Any discussion, comments on item one? Is there an applicant that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council, close the public hearing, and entertain a motion.
I'm approving motion to approve of item one.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Vice Mayor Buckley, seconded by Councilmember Torgerson to approve item number one. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Items, item four, a question, Chris, most of the comments I have from the public are to address items at four and five. Can we do those two together for the hearing and then vote separately?
Yes, Mayor, you can do that.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing on items four and five and ask for staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we're going to talk about the wastewater sewer and reclaimed water rates. So before we dive into the nuts and bolts of what's been happening over the last couple of months with our outreach process, I want to remember what this is all about. It's about providing for the way of life in cities through reliable sewer service. None of us could live in as close proximity to our neighbors without sewer service, without, without sewer service. In fact, sanitary sewer service is the critical inflection point in human history that has saved the most lives, more than fertilizers, blood transfusions, and antibiotics. The infrastructure and servants that provide this life-altering service are overlooked because the pipes are buried and the facilities are kept out of sight. But it's our responsibility to maintain this infrastructure, even if it's out of mind for the public. And we're coming to the intersection of much of what has been installed in Gilbert, needing extensive rehabilitation and replacement. It's costly to do this, but our lifestyle relies on it. So why is this happening now? It has to do with past growth and the birth of the infrastructure to support those homes and businesses that have been here for decades. You can see the addition of new pipes and pumps over the years on the map, with the highest number of installations occurring between 1990 and 2010. Under a normal lifecycle, this infrastructure would be middle-aged. But like all of us, infrastructure doesn't age evenly, and some of our midlife components have reached the end of their lives. The Artesian Spring that you see there of a force main bubbling up with sewage on McQueen Road is an example of our immediate need to deal with our force mains in a comprehensive way because they are the spine of our collection system. This break caused many months of disruptions to the roadway and to the adjoining neighborhood. We've got action plans for rehabilitation where possible and replacement when needed. Similarly, we know that the best preventative medicine to protect against degradation of pipes and manholes is to diminish the impact of corrosive and odorous sewer gases. We're planning to add numerous dosing stations to counteract the effects of these gases and therefore extend the life of the existing pipes and as a bonus, to improve the quality of life around our sewers due to decreased smells. With these prescriptions in mind, we're now going to focus on how we have gotten to this point in time to fund these needs. Nine months ago, we began the careful process of studying the options to keep these services running. We shared several options with both the Public Works Advisory Board and the Town Council last fall, with council narrowing them down to the two options that we presented to the public during the last two months of intensive outreach. Tonight is the date selected for the public hearing and the council adoption of one of these options, which will be put into place on bills received beginning in April. At this time, I would like to turn over the community outreach efforts portion of the presentation to Candace. And then, when she's finished, I'll come back to walk you through some of the themes of what we learned from the public.
Mayor and council, good to see you. As Eric said, when we first met a couple of months ago, we talked about the notice of intent and approval to move forward in community outreach, to really make sure that we were educating the community about the critical needs of maintaining this wastewater infrastructure. Additionally, we wanted to make sure we provided many avenues to actively listen to the community feedback in a constructive way. So we're going to get into that and give you a full landscape of the full-court press we did these past couple of months. Here is a comprehensive snapshot of what we put out for a communication standpoint. As you recall, the last time we spoke, I did show you a comprehensive media consumption chart based off of the demographic of the Gilbert community. Primarily, as you're probably not surprised, primarily efforts were within social media and digital. However, to ensure that every utility customer was effectively being communicated to and understood where they could provide their feedback, we also did print out about over 90,000 general traditional letters to the customers. For that, I'll give you some examples of those, those efforts. Here was our main landing page where citizens were able to take a look at all of the resources provided, including the rate study, the rate calculator, so they could see how they personally would be affected. Additionally, we sent up communication in the digital newsroom, kept them apprised of the upcoming virtual, virtual open houses, in-person open houses, as well as reminders about the online survey, the newsletter, digital displays, and truck signs, so a lot of out-of-home as well. And of course, our utility billing notices digitally and printed. Again, we also hosted in-person and virtual open houses where Eric and team were able to provide help and comprehensive understanding of the infrastructure and answer any may questions that the community may have. A lot of social media, as we know, a majority of our community is participatory in there. You can see we had over, past couple of months, 10 posts that garnered over 128,000 views, over 1,000 engagements, and over 500 comments. We also made sure, again, printed, we partnered with Gilbert Sun News and made sure to feature from a printed standpoint as well as digital, and then that letter. Because of that full-court press, we garnered a lot of media coverage to make sure, again, the community understood where they could reach us and communicate. To that point, the survey that we sent out garnered about, just went a little out of place. This should have been previously. But I mentioned social ads already, so I'll move forward to the survey. We garnered just over 600 or so respondents. That's about 0.7% of the overall customer, utility customers. We have about 90,000 utility customers. Now, we truly do appreciate the respondents. As you can see here, about 530 said they preferred the Alt-D, while 113 preferred Alt-B. And we truly do appreciate that. And based off of this quantitative feedback, we also started to dive into the qualitative feedback because in the survey form, we did ask for an open-ended question to provide any additional feedback for Mayor and Council to inform their decision of today's proposed rate. So Eric's going to go through that right now.
So we had about 400 or so people that provided comments on our feedback form, and they had a variety of thoughts, which I'm going to go over now. We want to recognize and acknowledge that there's a sentiment of frustration with increasing costs in just about every aspect of citizens' lives, which is in line with what people are, across the country, are experiencing. Whether it's electricity bills, or the cost of eggs, or purchase of a new vehicle, the costs are rising everywhere, and people are understandably frustrated with that. We also know that failing to make the necessary investments into our sewer infrastructure will absolutely result in exponentially higher costs to our residents, not even in the far-off future, but in the near term as well. So reinvestment in this infrastructure is vital to our way of life. Now, you can see some of the themes that we had there. One of the quite positive and generally universal theme that our residents gave us in the feedback was that they understood that in order to continue receiving these high-quality services, that additional resources are needed, and there was general appreciation for these services. There were concerns relating to affordability in general in Gilbert and also specifically regarding utilities. In recognition of this, we do have the utility bill discount pilot program in place, and we're researching and reviewing data to improve its effectiveness in the coming months. Respondents also wondered if we have insufficiently planned for the repairs to the system and if we should have done incremental increases over many years to keep up. It's true that wastewater rates were flat for many years in the past, and it's a partial cause for these large corrective actions lately. We're hearing now that a different approach going forward is preferred by the community. It's equally true that the massive supply shortages and skyrocketing construction costs of the past five years were unprecedented events that decimated construction budgets across the country and right here in Gilbert. Costs of materials in some cases increased by more than 30%. When you're talking about large-scale projects like our force main retrofits, a 30% cost increase is substantial in terms of actual dollars. There's also a very strong sense in the community that new development, in particular businesses and apartments, have caused rates to rise because they've not shouldered the costs associated with their impacts. We've done our best to show that the impacts of growth are paid for by that growth through the system development fees, and those fees have also increased significantly recently. In our outreach materials, we are explicit that rates only pay for operation, maintenance, and replacement of the system, and those are the only revenue source to fund these needs. But it's still a common misconception. And lastly, respondents were interested in more understanding of where the money is going and being spent, and they also desired for more options for funding these needs. And true to form, they actually offered all kinds of solutions, and I'm going to share some of these with you. I'm not going to read all of these, but these are direct quotes from the customer feedback form. "Our respondents had all kinds of creative thoughts on how to help us make ends meet." You'll recognize a theme of making growth pay for operations and maintenance, and this is illegal in Arizona, according to state statutes. We cannot do that. Other areas of interest are to use funds from other sources to pay for these services. Some ideas included charging for parking in the Heritage District or to forego parks or transportation projects, and instead, use the money planned for those improvements to offset utility rates. The inventiveness of these ideas demonstrates the public's interest in helping to find solutions, and we are very grateful for them. Unfortunately, financial policies and priorities and state regulations prevent many of them from actually being feasible solutions. However, we have done many things to reduce costs that just haven't been shared with the public, and I want to share a few of those from our teams with you tonight. Our stormwater team has been creative on multiple fronts, which have saved ratepayers millions of dollars. As we studied options for rehabbing catch basins and clogged and damaged stormwater pipes, our contractors initially suggested full replacement, but we weren't satisfied with that, and we continued researching and found repair-in-place alternatives that resulted in over $1.8 million on just those two projects. Our team also worked diligently with our congressional delegation to secure a grant for replacement of a large stormwater pump station. All of these efforts were the drivers behind a recommendation of no increase for the environmental compliance fee this year. Operationally in the wastewater division, between our integration of automation of valves and upgrading of motors to be more efficient as well as using our skilled labor in-house to rebuild certain high-degradation components, we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars per year in lieu of full replacements. These actions rarely make the news, but are integral to our commitment to producing value for our customers. Now, these savings are embedded in the options provided to council for continuing to fund sewer and reclaim water service, meaning without them, the request would have been higher. Now, you see one more cost savings at the bottom there. And I'm going to pause here to focus on that $13.8 million Ryparian grant. We're one of only, we're one of only two cities in all of Arizona to receive grants under this program, which we pursued in an effort to reduce costs to our ratepayers. When we were formally notified of winning this grant, we immediately began researching an adjustment to the increase proposal, which would have potentially been able an adjustment to the increase proposal, which would have potentially been able to reduce the rate increase in the all-cash option by about 15%. However, given the uncertainty right now regarding federal funding and in particular, federal funding for grants, we're unable to offer that alternative. We'll continue to closely track federal policy regarding these funds, and we'll assist our options when we are certain that we will get those funds that are promised to us. These are the two options that council has narrowed down to, and these are represented as the residential cost impacts. The differences can be summed up in a few different ways, as paying upfront for the identified critical projects with all cash from our ratepayers, or taking on debt of $110 million and phasing in a smaller rate increase now, followed by a subsequent additional rate increase next year. In this scenario, the town would be required to pay approximately $72 million in interest on that debt. So just like paying interest on your mortgage means less money going towards the principal balance, this means that money would not go towards the projects, but rather towards interest payments for the next 20 years. The all-cash option, however, makes the rate funds available for the next phase of capital projects that were already pushed out, while the cash bond option does not. It's important to note that Gilbert's infrastructure will continue to age during this time. We're going to continue doing assessments to ensure that our pipes are fulfilling their lifespan, and that we're able to quickly address situations where they are not. An earlier slide, I referenced Gilbert's explosive growth between 1990 and 2010. Much of Gilbert's infrastructure was installed in that same time span, and that means that repair and replacements are likely going to occur all at the same time span in the future. So we'll continue to try and prepare for this future infrastructure bill as best as possible, and that's one reason why rates are examined every other year. After several weeks of study and review, the Public Works Advisory Board recommended to the town council to select the alternative be all-cash option. We have an annotation up there that the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce has received a presentation similar to this, and after receiving that presentation last month, they recommended that council consider alternative D, the phased cash bond approach. Now, I shared with you the residential impact, and we presented a similar cost impact, prepared and shared broadly for our commercial customers under both of these alternatives. And of course, they have a slightly different fee structure than the residential flat fee, so there's a little bit more data behind all of that. And we also shared reclaimed water rate impacts with a small group of customers who received this service. In an effort to assist them with financial planning, back in June, we mailed a letter to these customers notifying them that the rate process was underway, and that they could expect a rate increase of similar magnitude that had just been completed with the drinking water rates. Now, because these customers do not use reclaimed water on their landscapes, this reclaimed water rate increase will not have a compounding effect for them. Mayor and Council, as I close, I want to help visualize what these dollars and cents mean in the real world. This pipe was in service last summer at a critical facility that serves an entire subdivision. We know that there's more like it out there in our system. So we're going to do the responsible thing, we're going to attack the problem instead of letting it fester. This is a list of the first five years of our projects in our long-range infrastructure plan, which is an 80-year plan for every asset in the system, so there's going to be more needs coming in the future. Deferrals now are only going to build a severe backlog. This plan costs a lot of money today, but delay will only cost more money in the long run, and in the short run, we're going to have service crises and be burdened with emergency responses and the high costs associated with those outages. We're not alone in this predicament. Last month in Japan, we saw a tragedy unfold much bigger than what has happened to us. It's a warning sign that we need to heed, because what lies beneath us isn't going to wait for us much longer. That's the end of my presentation, Mayor and Council. If you would like for us to answer any questions at this time, or you'd like to wait until after, the public, it's your pleasure.
Questions for Eric? Councilmember Torgerson.
There was a couple of things. The way that you showed cash bond versus the phased portion, it looked like the residents were paying less all the way to, for five years, let's say, but in the end, it's the same amount of money that has to be spent to fix this. Where is the balance that we're not seeing that they're paying? Is that just because they're paying on it for 20 years?
Yes. Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Torgerson, that is, that is the case. The bond outlasts that five-year plan, and so there's 15 years of debt service payments, interest payments after that, that the rates will still have to support. Under the cash option, all of the projects that that bond would have paid for are paid for in cash, meaning that additional rate revenue beyond that continues to pay for projects. So the town, after five years, or in the near future, under the phased approach with the bond, would have to raise rates again, in a probably a more significant way, in order to pay for projects that begin to come into that five-year plan, and/or take out another bond in order to keep up with additional projects.
Right, and the, one of the questions that I've been hit with recently in speaking to some apartment developers, people are upset about apartments' growth, which I fully understand. My understanding is that approximately 14,800 per door of apartments, for new apartments, is going, and that would cover part of their buying into the infrastructure, is that correct?
Apartments do pay into this infrastructure, both at the time of the system development fee, when that land is developed, as well as they become a routine monthly customer, and they are billed at the residential rate, like every single-family residential home is, based on the number of apartments in the complex. So if a 10-acre apartment complex has 400 units on it, they get 400 times the residential rate.
So if the residential rate goes up, let's call it $30, it's 400 times 30. So they're incorporating it into their rent, because most of them aren't paying a separate water bill, is what I'm assuming.
I haven't rented an apartment in a long time. I don't know exactly how they do that.
And the other thing is, one thing you didn't show is the cost of fixing it, let's say, by sleeving or something else, now, things that can be saved, extending their life, what it costs as opposed to failure. Do you still have access to that slide that you showed us a while ago?
I do not have that slide with me. We do know that one of, one of the slides that you're, that you're seeing cycle through here is that pipeline from the video that we saw earlier on in the slideshow. We are currently, probably this week, sliplining that pipe, and we've, we've got a contract that's coming to council in two weeks to, to complete all of that work for about $2.6 million, which is expensive, but it's a lot less expensive than digging up the freeway, by probably several orders of magnitude.
Vice Mayor Buckley.
You answered most of the questions that I had with Councilmember Torgerson. Can you, can you go back to the slide that shows the rates? If you don't mind, just at, what, by pretty quickly, and...
The residential rate?
Right, what the rates will be on both Alt-A and Alt-B, or D.
Yeah, so on this one, Councilmember Buckley, the residential rate is a $29.26 increase. That rate is currently $32.75, so it's, those two added together. And then, on the phased approach, it's $8.73 this year on top of the 28.75, and then 5.52 more the next year for residential.
Okay, so what's the difference between the two?
So, the main, so the difference, at the end of next year, would be about $14 or $15, and that, that is represented with that $110 million bond that fills that gap, and the $72 million of interest to, to pay back that bond over time.
Yeah, and that's where I was going to go with that as well, is $72 million is probably going to take 20 years to pay it off, I mean, obviously. So, I, to me, it just, you know, I look at this, and it's such a tough, it's a tough decision to make for many reasons on both sides, but to think that, you know, we are going to approve something or, or vote on something that will cause not just the town of Gilbert, but the residents to be paying for 20 years on something that if we do the cash bond, and, and also, I want to make sure, I just, you know, to me, it just doesn't make sense to do that. I mean, it's the conservative thing to do is to do the cash bond. I mean, I just can't see approving something that, $72 million in interest, I mean, it's astronomical. The, let's see, now, from, from what I understand also, if we don't use, if we do the cash bond, and we don't use all of those funds, there, let's say, there's, you know, several million dollars left over, we can then use those funds toward additional projects, right? If we have any funds that are left over from the cash portion.
Vice Mayor, if the, if, when, under the, the bond option, if the $110 million bond...
Well, I'm referring to the cash option.
Oh, the cash option, I'm sorry.
The bond, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that. We'd spend the money and pay the interest.
Yes, so if in, in the next few years, construction costs somehow go down, and we're able to do projects that we expected to cost $240 million at, at some number lower than that, we'll come back to council in two years, under our normal rate review cycle, and make that recommendation to change the rate to something that matches up with what our expenses actually are. And the all-cash option certainly provides that potential future, which is, which is why...
But maybe those rates might go down a little bit if we...
Yeah, and, and that's why the example with the riparian grant, that, that nearly $14 million would have had a significant impact on these, on the, our opportunity to bring the rates lower.
Okay, and that's, and that's what I wanted to find out. All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Eric, if I'm reading this right, sometimes I read these things wrong, but if I'm reading this right, you're saying after five years, we do the all-cash bond, we have $39 million left over for, for repair, for future pipes, or, correct?
Councilmember, that's correct.
Or if we do the phase, we only have 17 million.
That is correct.
So are these the same, the pipes that were put in, the ones that need to be replaced now, you set up in 2010, approximately around then?
You're testing my memory.
2005.
Five, oh, five sounds about right.
Okay, so are we to assume that pipes that were put in in 2006 were the same pipes that were put in 2005?
The, the pipes that we are emergency replacing today are very limited in certain locations in Gilbert. As far as we know at this time, we're still researching to make sure. We, we do believe that the vast majority of our pipes are not this material.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that, after we've fixed these pipes, chances are, we're looking at the next set of pipes that need to be replaced, correct?
That's correct, and, and the likelihood, the, the truth of the matter is, it's probably pipes that were, that were put in place in 1980, that are going to, these are just kind of out of line with their life expectancy.
And if we know that we have future pipes to fix, probably be nicer to have $39 million in a bank account, ready to fix those pipes, as opposed to 17 million.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, it's my understanding when we were talking about this before, that your team has gone and inspected a good portion of the additional infrastructure in the town related to this, is that correct?
We have a, a goal of inspecting every pipe in our system every sixth year. We have, we have not been able to achieve that goal due to various reasons, equipment malfunctions and, and lean staffing, but we've put some other things in place in order to be able to try to reach that goal going forward.
And do you feel like those mitigating measures are going to be able to prevent something like this from coming up again?
I don't think any operator of the system would be able to say that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Buckland.
Eric, earlier today, I got a, an email, we got an email, that had addressed some concerns, one that actually I had, that clearly mitigated it for me coming into tonight. It was one that the chamber, one of our stakeholders in town here, had addressed in regard to six-year inspection versus the eight years. Could you expand on that, just so that there's transparency in that, and there's understanding that, because as I understand it, dollars-wise, has no impact, six or eight, but can you just share that, that response?
Sure, Mayor. Councilmember Buckley, Buckland, apologies. So we have a six-year, a very aggressive goal of inspecting all of our pipes every sixth year. With the ones in particular that are under the freeway, we did not meet that goal, and we did it on, on the eighth year of that cycle, and we discovered that these pipes were in emergency condition. Had we discovered those pipes, the condition of those pipes two years ago, we still would have needed to replace them this year. We might have actually had to replace them last year. So the cost to do the replacement would not have been any different, we just maybe would have done it last year instead of this year. The material is the same...
And the reason for the delay?
Apologies, what was that?
And the reason for that delay?
Materials are the same, labor is the same, whether we did it last year, we did it this year. All of those are the same.
Yeah, I think where I was going was, one of the things that you addressed was that, although certainly aggressive goals, there were materials, you know, we were limited in equipment, extremely expensive equipment to inspect these things, and Gilbert has operated very lean for many, many years, and staffing is always a capacity issue. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. We have, we have a crew of three people to inspect 900 miles of pipeline.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. So we just mentioned 900 miles of pipeline under there, just want to get the scope of this. 22,000 manholes or something like that, too? Okay, and we, we were promised $13 million in grants, but because of the recent federal freeze, I guess, do we think we'll get that money, or do we, unknown at this point?
So our opinion is that we have a legally binding contract.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, it's my understanding when we were talking about this, that the materials that were used before turned out to not perform the way that they were advertised, and you guys were able to identify a new type of material that you feel that you're comfortable with, that'll hold up a whole lot better, is that correct?
That is, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Torgerson.
The, the grant money will have a direct impact, even if it's not, if it's not considered in this, I'm rounding the number to 30, and you said a 15% impact, which would have brought it down to 25.50, let's call it, 25 bucks. If that comes in in the future, will that be reflected in a reduction at some point, or a termination of, of the, the cost at some point?
We would accept that as revenue into our system, and then, that absolutely affects the bottom line, and then the future calculations of rate going forward.
As long as you can prove it doesn't go over Somalia first, right? Sorry, I had to take the cheap shot. Sorry, I had to take the cheap shot.
Any other questions? I have one question. Eric, would you go back to the slide that showed the comments from the residents? You kind of zipped through those rather quickly. I'd like you to pick two or three of those and read them and explain why it's not viable.
Sure. Make the developers pay for this because all the apartments are killing the homeowners' budget. We're legally binded by state statute that we cannot charge new development for operations and maintenance of the system. The only thing we can charge them for through that system development fee is the installation of the new infrastructure to serve their needs. Cut spending in other areas and use tax dollars wisely. So tax dollars are for general government services, not for utilities. These are operated independently as independent business units that need to be solely funded by the ratepayers themselves through rates. Buy garbage trucks that aren't five hundred thousand dollars, we would gladly do that. We, that is from about eight years ago, we could have gotten them for three hundred thousand. It's even hard for us to find them for five hundred thousand dollars these days.
Thank you. Councilmember Torgeson.
You touched on the cut spending in other areas and use tax dollars wisely. Would you please, that is the the enterprise fund, and please expand on that as they compare to City of Mesa, how they do it?
Sure, we'll mention Mesa. So our utilities in Gilbert pay for the utility service in Gilbert. They don't pay for police or fire or whatever your least favorite government service is that we offer. They only pay for that utility. In our neighbors across the border, they collect utility rate revenue and they transfer over a hundred million dollars from their utility funds every single year to their general fund to pay for police, fire, parks, or your least favorite government service. We don't do that in Gilbert, they stand alone, and the general fund has to stand alone also.
And that was a policy set up quite some time ago to make sure money wasn't bled off into other funds, and it's kept it, let's just, for lack of a better term, kept it honest to what it is. And just an example for everybody in this room, I have twelve thousand square feet in Mesa, and they do the electric in that area. The front three thousand square feet, twenty-eight hundred dollars a month for electricity. It would be about eight hundred with SRPs, so it does get bled off by other municipalities, but, all right, thank you for explaining that.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor, I was so interested in Councilmember Torgeson's story, I think I might have forgotten what I was just gonna say. Eric, Eric, I forgot what I was gonna say, so give me a minute, I'll come back.
Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, if I'm understanding what you're saying, in the one chart where we showed that if we go with the all cash, we would have thirty-nine million set aside for other projects, correct? And if I understand what you're saying, there'll be a fence around that, that that money could not be allocated to something else based on our policies, that it would be strictly set aside to do things associated with this utility's purpose, is that correct?
Yeah, that's a correct statement. That thirty-nine million dollars per year would be in our repair and replacement fund to do things like repair or replace the next force main in that, in those those twelve-year-long projects that we have, which on its own is about twelve million dollars a year, so those monies will be set aside just for the wastewater fund to do repair and replacement on the existing infrastructure.
So to be clear, no other of our not favorite government services could come in and take that, it would be totally fenced off for you guys to use?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Do you remember? Yeah, I got it.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thanks for speaking quickly, so I wouldn't forget it again. Can I assume that other cities around us will also be seeing some increases due to similar situations? Because I know, I don't know, I don't think it was a sewer line, but down the street from my house on Val Vista and Queen Creek, I believe Mesa Water Line had a blow and caused a sinkhole, and it's been about a week or two before we're fixing that, so it might, to assume that other cities are gonna start seeing some of these things happening, too?
Time is the ultimate winner, it never loses. So all of our infrastructure in the valley is aging, and their repair costs are coming due. We are, I would say, very progressive in this way in Gilbert, in that we're dealing with this head-on, and I would say that we're the first in the pool, and all of our, all of our colleagues around us are looking at jumping in with us.
Councilmember Kaprowski.
Eric, based on the information that we just had discussed and is on the slide, with the phased cash bond mix, at the end of the five years, do we have enough to even cover our normal operating budget?
We would have enough to cover operating, which is just the day-to-day running of the utility. We would not have enough, certainly in our repair and replacement fund ongoing, to fulfill the capital plan after the fifth year.
Thank you.
Other questions? No further questions of Eric, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
I've received several public communication cards on these items, some did not wish to speak, and I'll read those into the record. Stacy Schenke is opposed to items four and five. Mark Thompson, who did not wish to speak, said that thirty-dollar increase per month is three hundred and sixty dollars annually, I don't earn that, and a thirty-dollar charge increase, he can't afford that, no more higher taxes or fees. And Deborah Henrich against the all cash option for the phased cash bond debt, stop zoning for apartments and condos in Gilbert. The balance of the request to speak, we'd ask, as I call your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and place of residence, town or city of residence, and you'll have three minutes for your comments. Our first speaker tonight is Scott Huffman. Scott will be followed by Richard Morris, so be prepared.
Yeah, Scott Huffman, I live.
Push that button there. There you go.
I am Scott Huffman, I live in Gilbert, I moved here in ninety-eight. This is, I'm in my second home, Williamsville in Higley area. From what I just heard, it sounds like there might be a lack of upkeep and possibly using the wrong materials. Pipes that are put in in two thousand and six, and they're already talking about replacing them, that doesn't, that doesn't, something's wrong there. I don't, I don't see why that should be replaced so quickly. As far as the rate increases go, so in May of twenty twenty-two, my bill went up ten bucks. In May of twenty twenty-three, my bill went up ten bucks. In May, last year, in twenty-four, my bill went up twenty-five bucks. And now we're talking about this year, thirteen dollars if I have it correct. This madness has got to stop. I mean, if 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 the wrong material and the upkeep's not being done on their part, then something else needs to be figured out. I I don't think the cost should be taken upon the people of Gilbert. I also think that maybe an audit or something should be done, and there might be some services that we can get rid of. I don't know everything that they do, but I know right off the top, bulk trash, I've talked to people about bulk trash, you know, I don't know how much that costs, I'm sure it costs quite a few million dollars. Get rid of it, I mean, it's not a necessity. If if we're talking about, so in May of twenty, if we go back to twenty-three, and if everything goes the way it is, and there's another sixteen dollars in twenty-six raised on our bill, my bill's gonna double in three years, double, that's, that's crazy. I think there's, like I said, bulk trash and different stuff that we can get rid of possibly, you know. I've asked people how much that, I've asked a few people about that, and they said that, you know, some residents are upset about getting rid of it or whatever. I mean, there's other options, subscriptions, maybe one-time fees, you know, got junk. I just don't think that the, if there, if there's a possibility of saving costs by getting rid of some of those things, to where my bill doesn't have to double, I think we should take that route and also figure out what's going on with the, the upkeep and and stuff. And also, just a quick note, because I got twenty-five seconds left, SRP is having a meeting tonight also about raising their rates for the next year, I believe, and they're talking about a three-dollar increase, three dollars. We're talking fifty-five dollars by the time we're done, if if everything goes as, as, you know, planned in the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Richard Morris. After Richard is Rick Carabetta.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council, my name is Richard Morris, I live on North Nevada Way in the town of Gilbert, in the vicinity of the McQueen Activity Center. I don't think what I have to say is gonna make a difference, because I'm under the impression of Town Council, but I could be wrong, has already made up their decision on cash option for the project. It's understandable that nothing lasts forever, and infrastructure has to be maintained, repaired, replaced. Viewing the the video presentation that was on your site, the town of Gilbert site, which is this gentleman, which was very well done, it appears in the past decade that nothing was done, anticipated, addressing a future issue with the wastewater infrastructure. Now that the potential for future problems exist, instead of taking a bond, you want to hit the residents with a huge monthly increase of thirty-plus or minus dollars in April of twenty twenty-five for an infrastructure project, plus an water increase for water of another twelve dollars in April of twenty twenty-five, so you're talking about a forty-dollar increase in total. The past five years have seen COVID-nineteen, inflation, cost of living increases in rent, mortgage rates, insurance, utilities, taxes, et cetera. This all cash option will seriously affect the senior citizens of the town. The sixty-plus age sector of the town represents thirteen percent of the population, many probably are on fixed incomes. And if you listen to the news, many other sectors of the population are having trouble making ends meet, especially families with children. Because the wastewater problem wasn't anticipated by previous Town Councils, as I'm not, the residents of the town shouldn't be hit with a large increase in rates. I believe the increase should be phased in by procuring a bond. I think it was stated in the video presentation that I saw on your site, the town has an excellent credit rating, procuring a bond shouldn't be a problem. And that's all I have to say, I thank you for the time to speak, appreciate it.
Thank you, Richard. Rick Carabetta, you'll be followed followed by Edward Moraglia.
Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers, thanks for letting me speak. Rick Carabetta lived in Gilbert since two thousand and five. I must have missed the Town Council meeting where there was a lot of passion about this particular issue, because I'm getting a lot of sober faces here. I am not an engineer, but I am scratching my head, trying to understand how an infrastructure that can be put in over a thirty-year period, say, twenty nineteen ninety until now, can deteriorate to the degree that it has. I want to know who in God's green earth came up with a decision to put these materials underground in this city. The composition of the water should have been researched, if it's acidic, if it's alkaline, if it's hard. How can you possibly put metal underground in water conditions and then sit there and scratch your head and say, just thirty years later, in a worst-case situation, that we are where we are today? I don't understand it. I don't see the passion, I may, I wish I was at that meeting, where you're now asking us to double the bill after the last gentleman spoke, where there was increase and increase and increase over subsequent years. Now, is this water under the bridge, crying over spilled milk? Don't know. I just know that you guys or your predecessors have got us into a situation, we are now bound to underwater pipes, they're sexually deteriorating in front of our eyes. And it's sad and it's pathetic. So I'm gonna be paying for, my funding's gonna be paying for prior mismanagement, planning, and potentially materials and workmanship that nobody has yet to address. I've heard what we need to do, but nobody's talked about the workmanship that's been suggested about Mesa and Chandler and Tempe. I don't hear on the news that they're having deterioration problems of their sewer lines like I'm hearing here. I would like to hear that. An knowledgeable citizen is a happy citizen. We don't want to hear once the damage has already been done. Finally, I think it was four years ago, what a huge misjustice to citizens of Gilbert. The system was in place where if you used water, then that water usage translated to your sewer charge. Why was that taken away? And if we're talking about rate increases, give the citizens the bone, give the dog a bone by reinstituting that process. If you use less water, you pay less of a sewer charge. That was the silliest thing I've ever heard of, to have that taken away. All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Edward Moraglia, followed by Kevin Carpenter.
My name is Edward Moralia. I'm a resident of Gilbert for the last twenty years. I'd like to thank the Town Council for getting us all together, and I'd like to thank the city clerk for her response to my phone call, the World Financial Services did a wonderful report. I agree with you, and I agree with the city, that we do need to update the wastewater I would like to address the two things that we're looking at, the all cash and the cash bond, and this is the crux of the matter. We are not a community of financial millionaires. We are everyday working people with family, kids, pets, with household payments, a multitude of expenses, and some families live with a very tight budget. And an increase in the amount of all cash will hurt families. The purpose of a city town, a city council, is to do what is best for the citizens. As in the medical profession, do no harm. All cash proposal would do just that, harm. The cash bond mix, while nobody wants to incur debt, sometimes it's the best way to solve a problem, by spreading out the cost of the product over a period of time with the least amount of impact on the financial burden of families. I would much rather have my rates raised nine to ten dollars a month than the twenty-nine to thirty dollars a month. It's an amazing simple economic, simple economics, plus a cash bond mix will help. The council, the council can keep their goal of improving wastewater system without hurting the citizens financially, and I strongly encourage the council to adopt a cash bond mix. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Carpenter, be followed by Lisa Lopagianis. Kevin Carpenter, be followed by Lisa Alopajanas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is my first time here, so I've, uh, excuse me if I'm not articulate or I stumble a little bit. But thank you for the opportunity and also thank you for your administrative staff that helped me quite a bit kind of navigating this evening. I am, uh, one of those people that again is in favor of the phased-in cash bond. I never thought I would be, um, an old retired guy, but here I am. I are one now. I'm a retired paramedic and we don't, you know, the, I am on a limited income, just like many people in the room. So, plain and simple, I can't afford this any more than they can. When I bought my home in Gilbert Ranch, I'm sorry if I forgot to introduce myself, Kevin Carpenter, Gilbert Ranch. My utility bill has gone up, um, one hundred and ten percent from when I first bought that home. If you add another ninety-five percent hike, that's going to be two hundred percent increase in eight years. That's not cost of living, that's not, oh, we have to buy incidentals. Two hundred percent is a lot. The HOA has raised their rates for the same reason. This price is just not tenable. I would like to go out and buy a fifty thousand dollar pickup truck, but I can't do that. I would have to get a loan. Again, along the same lines of this with a, with a bond, I think that's the wiser decision. Everyone in this room has to live within a budget, every single one of us. And I understand that budgets go up and we have to do maintenance. But I've never seen a utility rate go down in, in any municipality I've been in, ever, ever, ever. You, you can say you can keep it in a fund, but it's not going to go down. It never will. The citizens of Gilbert in that survey have told you what they want. They are giving you, in fact, a mandate, Council and Mayor, that they want the bond issue. They cannot afford it. I cannot afford it. I feel like I'm being taxed to death, two hundred percent. And with that, I yield back my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Alopajanas.
That was a very honest attempt, whoever said that. It's Lisa Alopajanas. I live in Gilbert, Arizona. I have been a resident, uh, for twenty-five years. I had my house built, um, about twenty-three years ago in Gilbert, and I absolutely love the city. However, I am not qualified to speak into a lot of what's happened, other than I learned a lot. I too was frustrated with all of the new builds, the condominiums, the apartment complexes. I didn't realize the, the requirements. I don't know that I a hundred percent believe what was said. I'm just being very honest. However, um, I do know we're incurring costs as the middle class that are squeezing the life out of me personally. You know, this is a six, this is a sixty-dollar, uh, bill in and of itself. It was thirty dollars. That's a fifty percent increase. It's already been mentioned. My homeowners association has gone up, my car insurance has gone up, my home insurance has gone up, my SRP has gone up. Every utility I have has gone up astronomically. Currently, my utilities as such are almost half of the price of my mortgage. So I have been a good law-abiding citizen in the city of Gilbert ever since I've lived here. I'm thinking of moving, not just because of utility costs, but increases that continue to go. And I will echo what was just said. I've never seen any utility go down ever in my history. And I don't think they ever will. That money will go somewhere else. The other thing I wanted to share is when I built that home, I incurred a loan somewhat like a bond. And I had to pay interest and I had to pay extra money for that to have the privilege of living in that beautiful home. And I would echo the same on the second option to get the bond and the mixture so that we're not incurring all that cost at once. It's too big of an ask. It's just too large. And I live within my means. I don't spend, you know, over. But I would also like to say, I do feel some one or some people in our department let us down. Because I don't, I, I don't think we should be in the situation that we're in with a great need. Those pictures are scary and I know they're real. But we shouldn't have that great need. Somebody dropped the ball and I think we need to go back and do some corrective measures in addition to getting our pipes fixed. I think we need to look at how we're doing things and maybe reevaluate, can, how can we do better? Because this is the city of Gilbert and I think we can do better for our citizens. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Lisa. That concludes the request to speak. Ask if Eric, if anyone has any other further questions for Eric?
I do.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, come back to the stand. Eric, when the pipes were first put in, am I correct with what I read, that they were the recommended pipes for EPA at that time?
Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni. The pipes that are in question are, there's three five-hundred-foot spans of them that go under the freeway. So we're not talking about all of Gilbert. But these, these pipes, yes, ductile iron, that was the standard at the time for those, those types of uses. Gilbert has since adopted a different standard for these types of uses. And so we've different materials that do not degrade.
Okay, so at that time that we put those pipes in, we weren't using secondary pipes. They were the top of the line and recommended, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, also, if we did the cash bond and we found, is there, we found that maybe five, six years in, there's more repair to get done, is there any possibility of that six-dollar going up during that twenty-dollar, during that twenty-year period?
So this, um, let me, I want to make sure that I understand, understand your, your question here. So if, let's say in three years, we, we, we learn that there are additional costs even within the next few years. There's very, there's, there's a limited amount of ability for the, the fund to absorb additional costs within that fee structure. So be, and so, um, it also only balances the five years. So there's a sixth year and a seventh year and an eighth year. And so we would have the, the nine and the seventeen million dollars to be able to continue ongoing costs. We know that they are already above that, um, on the, on the repair and replacement fund. So there will need to be an additional rate increase, probably within the five years even, just to meet our, our needs there.
So we could be at eight, nine years into this, we could be at fifteen, twenty dollars?
On top of that.
On top of that, which would be another hundred and twenty million in interest? Around?
I don't think I'm following the math on that.
That's okay. It'd be more interest than the seventy-two million, correct?
If we do another, another bond, yes.
Yeah, another bond.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a possibility that we could get close to that thirty-dollar or, um, in the all, in the, in the cash bond, there could be a possibility that we could be nearing that thirty-dollar increase with even more interest if costs continue to rise.
I see what you're asking.
See what I'm asking?
The, the, it's likely. It's actually probably very likely because the needs, we know what the needs are in this five-year plan and we know that they continue after that. And they're not provided for after that. So the, the options will be another bond, which cannot be funded
Right.
under the current rates. Or pay those, um, in cash, but you've already accrued the need to, um, pay back this loan, this bond.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, it's, it's, it's my understanding that, um, when we did discover this, um, in the, under the pipe, under the freeway, even if we had looked at it a couple of years earlier, there was already significant damage that would have had to been addressed at that time. Is that correct?
That, that's correct, yeah.
So, and, and to, uh, Councilmember, um, Bon Giovanni's point, um, this is something, this material was the standard for the industry at the time. And it's my understanding, other municipalities are starting to see similar types of failures. Is that correct?
Yes, we're, we're seeing similar things happen elsewhere.
All right, so we're taking a proactive approach, trying to get in front of it. And you guys have identified where this type of material is likely at in our community. And you're working on plans to get that mitigated. Is that correct?
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Torgeson.
I wanted to point a couple of things out. The, uh, in the past, rather than, than go looking in the past and everybody wants to throw blame because it feels great. And it can be done. You could probably start singling out a couple of council people or somebody that made a bad call somewhere. It doesn't solve the problem. The problem still has to be decided between its cash or phased. Throwing blame is not going to help because we can look back, there were a couple of times where rates were actually reduced. Whether anybody wants to believe it or not, it's a fact. And the fact of the matter is, is we had an extremely conservative council, which I completely appreciate. But they put the idea of not an increase ahead for fifteen years and brought it down twice, which resulted in an inability to do some inspections. A judgment calls made somewhere along the line. It took eight years instead of six. Maybe it should have been done in three. And no one can possibly anticipate the failure that has occurred. If you buy a car, you, you think you're going to get a hundred thousand miles, but if you don't check the fluids regularly and that engine block breaks at fifty, guess what? You're paying for a new engine or you don't have a car. So I, I don't want to sit there and, and try and say that somebody was too conservative because they didn't give you a three or five percent increase, which every year over the last fifteen years would be more than what we're talking about under any circumstances. No one wanted to go there. Everybody wanted to keep a zero-based budgeting, tight ship. And judgment calls were made on ev- a bunch of people, whether it be staff or council members that directed the policy. I don't think it's healthy for any of us to sit there and look behind us and try and cast that blame. Whatever the decision is up here, it's an ugly decision, it's uncomfortable, it's expensive for anybody. Everybody up here is subject to whatever happens, whether it's fourteen dollars or thirty dollars. No one up here is immune from it. No one feels good about it. It's impossible to feel good about it. So I want to point in, it, things do go down when they can go down. And sometimes we got a little cheap, you know, as a town, no individual, cheap rather than frugal with the money. And yes, we are paying the price for it with this, per two, these three five-hundred-foot pipes and others that are degrading before us. But please stop looking behind yourself and let's try and figure something else out.
Vice Mayor Buckley.
Um, I, I would like to go back to your conversation with Councilmember Bon Giovanni. So you, you said if we do the cash bond, there is most likely we'll have another raise in five years. I just want to make sure I heard what you were saying correctly, that it's possible because this cash bond, uh, not cash bond, I'm sorry, the cash, uh, just the cash pay. So that, in five years, that's going to cover what we need to replace and repair over the next five years. And at the end of that five years, you know, we, if we budget it right, we will use all of those funds for these repairs. So then the, the ongoing, that's still, I mean, how many square miles are we now that we've got pipeline going? A lot. So a- and I, what, where I'm going with this is if we, if we also take, go, go to the cash bond, the alt-D, right, is the cash bond, um, section, we're gonna, we're gonna use those funds to do the exact same thing over a five-year period, correct?
That, that, yes.
For the cash, the cash, we do the same repairs, the same everything
Yep.
over five years with both.
Yes.
So if we do the alt-D and we have a fourteen-dollar-a-month less payment, you know, by doing that, in the end, we're going to have to, to have another increase to get additional funds to do additional repairs. Then we, we are, we are going to still have twenty years to pay on that bond and seventy-six million dollars or whatever that figure was, seventy-some million dollars in interest to pay. For, for, so that five years, really, we're going to be paying on that. Plus, we'll have additional raises in between. Am I correct in that thinking?
There was, there was a lot there that I, I, I want to make sure that I, I communicate it clearly because I think it's, it's, it's very important that we get this, this communicated correctly.
Yes.
The all cash option does not preclude the future from rate changes. So with the information we have today, this is, this is good for five years. And we suspect it's, um, it's very sufficient for years after that. We'll update every two years under all of these, under either of these options, um, as we add the next years in. Under the phased option, where we sell the bond, within this five years, it is highly likely, highly, highly likely that the rate will have to be increased beyond what you see here in order to just pay for the sixth year of the plan that is not represented because the bond does not support anything in the sixth year. It only supports things in the first five years. On top of that, the rate is lower, so we collect less revenue. And of that revenue that we do collect, a lot of it has to go to repay the bond. So we have just less cash available to do anything, even in the sixth year. So it's very likely that that phased approach with the bond will require by the end of this, of this period, that the rates might actually be similar. But we'll just still have less available funding for, for the operations and the maintenance.
Okay.
I hope that clarified.
I think you clarified that very well for how I put it, but, um, yeah, that, that's what I wanted to make sure that everyone understood, that just because we do the bond part does not mean your rates may not go up again later. And then we're paying on, we're paying on the, the seventy-nine million dollars in interest plus another, another rate increase.
Correct, that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action and/or motion, discussion and/or motion. On item four, I think we do these separately. Councilmember Kaprowski.
Mayor, I just wanted to add a couple more items to our discussion and based on some of the comments that were made, um, by the public today. I do believe that people in the community are looking at their entire bill versus just the one-line item that we're talking about today. This is just for the wastewater and the reclaimed water. And we know that we have made increases in the water rates as well, um, that have increased the past two years. And during the water rate increase, we did take a bond and that was in that separate enterprise fund in order to make that phase in increases. There was comment about looking at bulk trash service to reduce costs. And I think that's something we can absolutely look at as a council, but that, again, is in a separate bucket of money. So on your bill, your total bill may go down if we adjust that bucket, but that's not the bucket we're talking about today. And then when we look at the cash bond option, it had that seventy-two million dollars in interest. And one of the items that we're piloting right now is the utility assistance. And I think that I'd really like to see that expanded in a way, that it can help individuals that are more on a fixed income and that need assistance in this area. But we could put much less than seventy-two million dollars in interest into that utility assistance and still help those individuals, um, versus burdening ourselves with that interest. So I just wanted to comment on those, on those items as we, I think we had great discussion earlier though. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. The night I was elected, I wrote myself three rules. The night I was elected, I wrote myself three rules that I always bring up when we have tough decisions. And this is a very tough decision. I had to bring it up a couple of times to myself in the last two years. But the rules are simple. Number one, never look at a long-term problem through a short-term lens. Two, never vote on something just to make you re-electable. And three, decisions are easy when your values are clear. When I look at taking on debt for this, it may solve a short-term problem because the economy is tight for, for everyone. I understand that. My hope is that the economy is short-term and it does get better, but I hate to make a long-term decision based on a short-term lens and incur more debt. I don't believe it'll be $78 million when this is over. I think we'll have to raise rates again if we do the cash bond. And we may be looking at 100 million, 120 million with the rate at the very, with the rate increasing to a point where it may be near the $30 per month that we're looking at now. It's not a popular decision, but for me, it's a decision that has to be made for the good of the town, so we don't have a situation where it's even worse and we have more debt.
Thank you. Others? Discussion? I tend to agree that it, the, the debt is not good. We've never liked debt. Nobody likes debt. And if we can avoid that, I think that's important. One thing that, uh, was brought up that I, I want to emphasize again is that we still have a pending, uh, amount of money that it looks like is coming from the federal government. We don't know for sure right now, but it's actually, since we have a firm contract with them, uh, the, the chances are more likely that they, it will follow through than it won't. And that will reduce the, uh, the cash option by whatever X amount that is. Anything we collect that way will reduce that, that rate. So I, I, I'm more positive about that happening than, um, than I am about taking on more debt. Patrick.
Mayor, if I could just add some clarification on that matter. So when we set the rate tonight, we can't then not adjust it if we are successful in actually receiving those money, but given that we look at rates every two years, we could certainly take that into consideration when we, uh, look to adjust rates or set rates at that time.
That could still turn out to be a reduced rate in two years, which someone has suggested we've never reduced the rate before. That could happen. Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you. That's kind of where I was going at, um, whether we can put that in as an addendum to any kind of motion that we reevaluate in two years if that money is available. I don't know the, the, how that works, Patrick, but, um, but that's something that we can consider.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, we do look at rates every two years, so no need to addend the motion. We will automatically do that.
Chris.
And then Mayor Anderson, with regard to, to the two separate items, items four and five, I would recommend separate motions.
Right.
The council could do it together, but in case council members want to support one and oppose the other, it'd be much cleaner if you do it separately.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilmember Kaprowski.
I'll make the motion to approve item four with the alt B, all cash option.
May I amend to that? I would propose that, and although it's somewhat ceremonial, with a five-year sunset on that, so it has to be fully reexamined, no matter what happens. So at least we're not permanently sane, which I understand it's every two years, but at least we're recognizing what a horrific burden this is. And that we look at, and the, the next council has to at least step up and take the same responsibility and the same unelectability for doing it as we are here. And I think that's only fair because we're at least recognizing that it's not, that it's going to be completely looked at in five years. It doesn't somehow just continue forward so that the, the increase is, uh, the third $29.26 increase is sunset and it has to be reexamined.
To ask the, uh, person making the motion, how do you feel about that?
Um, I think that's the decision of the body. I, I, I'm not going to amend my, the, I'm not going to make that amendment.
Okay. Patrick.
Mayor, if, if I may, we do review the rates every few years. Uh, I'd be more than happy to call up Kelly Foest, our Budget Director, but I would advise putting a cap on it in five years, a hard cap. I'm not sure how that would be viewed by writing agencies and, and their view of our support of the system. Again, we do review every two years, and if, at, at that time, it's not necessary, we would certainly bring forward whatever was appropriate and, and recommended to the council for consideration.
There's a motion on the table to adopt the cash option for resolution 4537.
Mayor Anderson, there's no second yet. Just want to clarify that.
Second.
Who's that? Councilmember Buckland?
Councilmember Buckland.
Then a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Buckland, to go with the cash option, adopting resolution number 4537 for wastewater rates billings generated after March 31st, 2025. Please vote. Motion passes 6-1 with Councilmember Torgerson dissenting. Item five? Your motion? Councilmember Kaprowski.
I'll move to approve item five, um, with the increase to the reclaimed water rate through resolution number 4538, also with the all cash option.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Vice Mayor Buckley. She beat you to it. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. That concludes the public hearings.
Mayor, that was 6-1, a 6-1 vote.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was 7-0. 6-1 with Councilmember Torgerson dissenting. Consent calendar, Vice Mayor.
Oops. I did that last topic. Sorry. I'll, I'll get used to this. Uh, okay. So I've a, I've a, received a request from, um, Councilmember Torgerson for a brief presentation from staff on the items on the consent agenda. So can I hear from staff on items number six through 13? Actually, through 12. We're grouping 13 in there since that's all of the consent items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kristin Drew, and I serve on the people team. And I'm here to speak to you in regards to item number six. Uh, this is preventive MRI screenings. This is a contract with Pranuvo to provide preventive screenings to employees 45 years or older for early detection of cancer and other diseases. We provide two vendors for employees to choose from, Pranuvo, which is before you this evening, and SMI imaging, which was approved at the council meeting on January 28th. These screenings detect cancer and other diseases, which increase quality of life for our employees and reduce cost to our health plan, which is self-funded. This program was piloted with fire and caught several items that would have otherwise gone undetected and had increased impacts. These high-resolution MRI images include a radiologist report and a consultation with the nurse practitioner. The town contributes $520 towards the cost of the scan, and the total program with the two vendors is budgeted at $320,000, and that's based on anticipated employee usage. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
I, and I know that this is probably a repeat for you, but in the end, this does actually save us money, doesn't it?
Correct.
So it's not really well, money well-spent. It's money well-invested.
It is an investment in the health of the employees, and as I mentioned, the health plan is self-funded, so any reduction in cost to the health plan is a savings to the town.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Jessica, can you state, I guess, the item that you're going to be speaking on since we're doing all of them?
Yes, Mayor, Members of Council, Vice Mayor Buckley. I am here for items seven through 10, I believe. Uh, item number seven is riparian distribution structure. This is the completion of 15% design for the riparian distribution structure that was mentioned, um, in the previous rate conversation. This is the help with the culture and biological evaluations for part of the, the environmental clearances that need to happen in order to, to use the grant funding that, that's being received on this project. It is currently budgeted in the, funded by the wastewater fund. If we do get the grant funds finalized and formalized and officially received, then this will be paid for by those grant funds. Item number eight is our urban lakes renovation for the Cosmo Dog Park Lake. This is for a contract for the actual construction of that project, as well as the next phase of the contract for the, um, project management with CEI. This is, um, being funded by general fund replacement funds that are set aside for the purpose of replacing general fund-funded infrastructure. Item number nine is Lindsay Road improvements from Queen Creek Ocatillo. This is our Little Lindsay project widening to complete Lindsay Road, um, all the way down south through town. This is GMP 1 with Hayden for the actual construction work to happen. It's also construction management, um, contract with Civil Solutions Engineering, and then Quality Assurance Materials Testing Contract with Integer. This design is essentially complete, and we're awarding, uh, the GMP for construction at this time. We have essentially acquired the right-of-way that's needed for this project. We do have two, the, two property owners that we're still negotiating with, um, on that, but we do have orders of immediate possession so we can start construction. Um, and this is funded primarily by our 2022 voter authorized transportation bonds. And then item number 10 is a blanket contract with Ferguson Enterprises for purchases of fittings, pipes, hydrants, repair clamps, valves, all kind of miscellaneous appurtenances that are used by both our water and wastewater crews in the field. This is a state contract, uh, $1.1 million per year with up to four renewals. And, um, each wastewater fund has their budget that they use for their supplies, and then the water fund has a budget that they use for their supplies. Um, and those are paid for out of their respective operating budgets, but it's one blanket contract because it's the same vendor. And those are mine. If there's any questions?
Okay. Counsel, anyone have any questions?
I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Glenn Schlotman with Economic Development. I'm here to talk about item number 11, our tourism marketing services. So we are requesting a change order to the existing J-Ray Tourism Marketing Services contract. If approved, um, it would add budgeted media buys with subcontractors to the existing contract. This contract assists in our, our visitor marketing efforts to bring new money into the community, uh, through visitor spending and benefits Gilbert businesses and town services. Uh, the funds being added to the contract are already budgeted in FY '25 and allocated to media buys. 80% of the contract is paid for with Prop 302 funding.
Okay. Councilmember Torgerson.
Is any of this paid with the, uh, the bed tax money that's supposed to go towards tourism?
The existing 20% will be paid with bed tax funds.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've got item number 12. This is a regular item that comes to you every quarter. Uh, when there are claims that the town has and are settled through our risk department, they do get attributed to the department that is associated with those claims. We don't budget for them upfront because we don't know which department is going to have claims or how much they are. So every quarter, we'll bring you a report, and it will have information about how much contingency is needed in each of the departments. For any details on specific claims, um, you can ask the town attorney's department, and they could give you information about that. Any question?
Councilmember Torgerson.
I overstepped. I didn't intend to include 12, and I did. So thank you for the explanation, but I understand. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Does, uh, does anyone have, excuse me, any questions on items six through 13? Councilmember Torgerson?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
No, I move to accept all consent item, calendar items as written.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Buckland, right? So, um, with that, then that, oh, I guess let's vote. Please vote. If no one has any more questions. Councilmember Torgerson, do you have another question? Okay. So as, there's been a motion and a second, so please vote. Whoops. I guess that's me. That needs, still needs to vote. Okay, so that concludes our consent agenda, and I will give it back to the mayor.
Thank you. We have one administrative item, item 14, Consider Acceptance of the Budget Report and Contingency Report for the Second Quarter of Fiscal Year 2025. I'll entertain a motion and a second to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
Move by Vice Mayor Buckley, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Communications, again, Vice Mayor.
All right. To begin communications. "We value the, but the participation of our community members in robust exchange of ideas. However, it's essential that, that this discourse remain respectful and constructive, reflecting the professionalism expected in such forms. Misinformation and personal attacks undermine the collective efforts and do not contribute to the productive dialogue necessary for our town's progress. This is an opportunity for the public to address the town council directly about issues impacting the town. Accordingly, the town council will not allow for moments of silence or playing of music or other recorded materials, which could distract from the meeting decorum or violate copyrights. While we understand and appreciate the passion of our community members, um, bring this to this session, we remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. This practice can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and distract from the respectful atmosphere we strive to maintain. Tonight, we'll invite you to come up to the podium. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence, and you will have three minutes to directly address the town council, unless otherwise indicated. If the speaker will be using three minutes of another person's time, that person should state their name, the city they reside in, and acknowledge that they are donating their three minutes to the current speaker." And with that, our cur, our first speaker will be Richard Young.
Richard Young, Gilbert. And good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor.
Please turn on your microphone.
Richard, turn, push the button for the microphone. There you go. Thank you.
Richard Young, Gilbert. Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. My topic today, this evening, is office of digital government, Black Lives Matter, and an issue that of institutional memory that may persist. When I was reviewing my records on the Office of Digital Government, I saw a photo of Gilbert Police taking a knee to Black Lives Matter, or perhaps George Floyd. That was the consensus, national consensus at that time. I think it no longer is, but there may be a persistence of memory that I'd like to deal with to some degree. That consensus was based on two falsehoods. The first one was that because of institutional racism, the police in America were shooting black people at a greater rate than other people. As a matter of fact, that came under study by Roland Frye, Dr. Roland Frye of Harvard, intensely. He did his study twice, and he came up with this conclusion. On the most extreme use of force, officer-involved shootings, we find no racial differences, no racial differences. So we basically tore the country apart for a falsehood. And the second falsehood, and it's a big one, is that the officers arresting George Floyd somehow killed him. I think the evidence strongly suggests that he did not, and I don't want that memory to continue with ODG or anybody else in this country. The big issue was the knee on the neck, except it wasn't on the neck. It was on the shoulder in an approved technique taught by that police department, illustrated in the training manual. I have the illustrated illustration here. It looks exactly like the control of George Floyd. It is not a killing mechanism. And I gave the gentleman over there a copy of this material that I'm presenting here. The important thing appears in the autopsy, and you have a copy of that in the materials. On page two of the autopsy, at the very top, it says, "We find no evidence of life-threatening injuries." If there are no life-threatening injuries, how did they kill him? And that included examination of the neck, looking for signs of strangulation, everything. How did the officers kill him with no life-threatening injuries? No stab wounds, no shooting, no strangulation, nothing of that sort. So what may have killed him? The autopsy also discloses that there were eleven nanograms of fentanyl in his system. That is a killing dose. I provide also more documentation on that. A number of people who died from fentanyl had, on average, nine nanograms of fentanyl in their system, two lower than Floyd. He had a killing, a murderous dose of fentanyl in his system. Did he have anything else that might have injured him? He had an enlarged heart, multifocal arthrosclerosis, ninety percent proximal narrowing of the right coronary artery, seventy-five percent of the proximal and left anterior descending artery. He should have been walking around with his own embalming fluid with a condition like that. Was there anything else? Yes, an adrenal gland tumor that causes high blood pressure, rapid heartbeat, sweating, headache, and tremors. Normally, in a criminal case, you have-
Richard, I have to interrupt you. I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
I have to interrupt you. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. You'll find it all in the material that I left with you.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
No more nailing.
Our, our next speaker will be Rayanne Wood.
Thank you, and good evening, Town Council and Mayor. My name is Rayanne Wood. I've been a proud resident for over thirty years of Gilbert. I'm here once again to continue the discussion regarding the trees and landscaping in College Park Country Estates. At the town meeting in December, and again, two weeks ago, I addressed several inaccuracies that had been presented to the town staff and subsequently repeated by the town council and the previous mayor. Whether you call these misrepresentations, falsehoods, or lies, the fact remains, the claim that College Park Country Estates is the only neighborhood in Gilbert where the town maintains landscaping in the public right-of-way is simply not true. Through a public records request, we have identified seven locations where the town of Gilbert provides landscaping maintenance, seven locations. Let me share the maps with you. The first one is the area of Greenfield and Queen Creek. There's maintenance being done by the town of Gilbert. The next area is Warner and Cooper, also being maintained. Also, we have west of Gilbert Road, north of Elliott, with landscaping and maintenance being maintained. The area of Guadalupe and Burt, all these are highlighted in red. Lindsay and Warner area. Gilbert Road, south of Elliott, north of Hackamore Street. That was Hackamore Street. Lindsay Road, south of Guadalupe. So that's seven more areas. As this, as you can see, this is not limited to our neighborhood. Parts of the Heritage District and other areas also receive maintenance from the town. During the December meeting, the town staff, a town staff member or a council member made two statements. One, the maintaining of our neighborhood's landscaping is unfair to other taxpayers. Two, that other neighborhoods might perceive this as unfair. As a taxpayer and a property owner with a plat and an easement agreement that explicitly outlines maintenance responsibilities, and considering that multiple areas of Gilbert receive landscape maintenance, I find this entire situation as unfair. Please review the information that's been presented to you and make a decision with the facts. Get all the facts from your town councils, your town staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Brandon Wood, and Allison will be donating her time to him. So Brandon, you will have six minutes. And Allison, can you acknowledge? Are you, are you in the audience? Oh, there you are. Okay, thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to challenge the deeply flawed and misleading justification behind the proposed removal of the seven red gum eucalyptus trees in College Park Country Estates. These trees are not just part of our neighborhood, they are taxpayer-owned assets that provide shade, beauty, and environmental benefits to our community. Town staff claims these trees are a safety hazard due to their susceptibility to sudden branch drop. Yet, the Arborist Report commissioned by the town itself directly contradicts this claim. The report clearly states that all eucalyptus trees, again, all eucalyptus trees, not just the red gum eucalyptus trees, are susceptible to this phenomenon. Despite this fact, town staff are arbitrarily targeting these specific trees while ignoring the reality that eucalyptus trees continue to exist and thrive across Gilbert. What's worse, town staff have publicly stated that they no longer plant eucalyptus trees. This is an outright lie. Just this past December, five new eucalyptus trees were planted in the Water Park Plaza. You can see them here, right below, right below the water tower. Five new eucalyptus trees that town just planted just last month. In fact, there's a plaque with most of your guys' names on it at that same park. How can the town justify removing these trees under the guise of safety while simultaneously planting new ones? This blatant inconsistency exposes the true nature of this decision. It's not based on fact or public interest, but on misinformation and arbitrary enforcement. Even more concerning, these trees and our neighborhood fall within the newly designated Northwest Gilbert Revitalization Area, where the town, where the town has committed to preserving and improving mature neighborhoods like ours. Town staff just approved this revitalization area last year, and their first call to action in this zone is to remove the landscaping in one of Gilbert's oldest neighborhoods. The town itself has acknowledged the importance of proactive revitalization to prevent decline and enhance the quality of life for residents. Yet, instead of following their own stated mission, they are actively degrading our neighborhood by removing valuable, healthy trees that contribute to its character and livability. Furthermore, the Arborist Report does not recommend removal. Instead, it explicitly states that proper maintenance, including structural pruning and crown reduction, significantly reduces the likelihood of sudden branch drop. The report emphasizes that trees on a frequent pruning schedule have far fewer incidents of failure. Yet, instead of following the advice of certified professionals, town staff are choosing to ignore science, disregard expert recommendations, and push their own unfounded agenda. This raises serious concern. Why is staff opinion being prioritized over professional expertise? Why are taxpayer-funded assets being destroyed based on falsehoods and contradictions? The trees in question have been deemed low to moderate risk. They're not hazardous. Removing them is not, is not just unnecessary, it's wasteful, dishonest, and a betrayal, betrayal of public trust. I've stood here time and time again, stating fact after fact after fact. I have presented evidence, expert recommendations, and clear contradictions in the town's reasoning. Yet, despite all of this, the town council continued to ignore the truth. It's time for this council to stand up for its constituents and for the people of Gilbert. Stand up for one of Gilbert's oldest neighborhoods. Stand up for the residents who cherish their community. Save the Shade and Streetscape Master Plan and enforce town policy. I demand that the council put a stop to this baseless removal and hold town staff accountable for their misinformation. Follow the Arborist recommendations. Implement a proper maintenance plan. Stop using deception and arbitrary policies to justify removing healthy, taxpayer-owned trees. The public deserves transparency and fact-based decision-making, not lies and reckless destruction. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, that concludes the citizens' comments, so back to you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. In our future meetings, we have a couple of items to follow up on, the meet and confer and a study session related to comparative traffic accident data. Next, go to communications, report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just bring up the presentation. Okay, if you can go to the next slide, I just have one item for you tonight. I'd like to recognize Maitland Hazard, Senior Plans Examiner from the Development Services Team, has become a Master Code Professional. Master Code Professional is the highest level of designation that the International Code Council offers. To achieve this designation, Maitland has been certified in over seventeen categories within ICC's family of certifications. Only about one thousand members of ICC have achieved the MCP designation, and the town's very lucky to have him. Congratulations, Maitland, and we're glad you're on our team.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Close out the presentation.
Thank you. Report from the council. Counselmember Bon Giovanni.
Okay, I didn't get my usual report, so I'm going to wing this one on my own, so good luck. Okay, some parks are wrecked. On, on February twelfth, there's a dog etiquette class, so does your dog talk back to you? Does he talk during TV? Does, does he pull on the leash? There's a dog etiquette class on two twelve from five o'clock to six o'clock. On two fifteen, family bird walks. I hope that doesn't mean you walk your family bird. I believe that's at the Riparian Park to go bird watching from two fif, on eight AM to twelve PM on two fifteen. Okay, um, there's a, on two twenty, at six thirty to eight o'clock, residential landscape, landscape workshop, maximize your watering system. I hope that means by using minimal water. And then on the twenty-fifth, at seven AM to two thirty PM, our fourteenth annual Gilbert Water Festival. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselmember Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor. There are many veterans and currently active-duty military members that live within the community of Gilbert, and we'd like to pay tribute to them and honor them for the service that they offer to our country and to our community. As a part of that, we have a program called the Military Tribute Banner Program. And in this program, basically, you can purchase one of these, and they're displayed in the Heritage District on Memorial Day, Independence Day, and the Fourth of July. At the end of that period, the sponsor can keep this particular banner and as a momentum. So we would encourage you, if you want to participate in this, the banners need to be ordered by March thirty-first so that they are ready to be displayed for the Memorial Day weekend. And we really appreciate all the sacrifices that these folks do, and we thank them for that.
Thank you. Any others? From the mayor, I have a couple of follow-up items. First thing, I had mentioned the passing of Dr. Wally Deluckey, who is one of our finest school superintendents. I wasn't sure of the date, but that memorial for him is on February the eighteenth. It's coming up. It's at five thirty at the Gilbert High School auditorium. And I think I had a couple of other items to follow up on. Volunteer MVP Awards, the nominations are open right now, February third through the twenty-fourth. Nominate a volunteer, and this includes nominations for Youth Volunteer of the Year and the Gilbert Kindness Group Award. And then we also have Gilbert Feeding Families, with the food drive is going on starting now through February twenty-third. And this has been a great program in the community, one that's supported by so many members in the community. So you can find a place where you can donate food during this food drive. Just look up online, and it'll let you know where those locations are. Thank you. If nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Aye, we're adjourned.